Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting over at this time. Please turn all cell phones off, electronic devices off or debiperated this time. Mr. Bob, would you please lead us in our prayer and pledge, sir?
Heavenly Father, we read in Thessalonians that we're sanctified people as long as we walk in your Word. And with that, you listen to our pleas. You watch our every footstep. You give us sound judgment. You give us wisdom as long as we were within your Word. We pray for that tonight, Heavenly Father. And may everything we talk about decide on, may we glorify God in the process. And we pray in the name of our most beloved Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Lord for which He stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consider approval of the minutes of the June 19, 2017 meeting. Do you have a chance to review?
I'm not emotionally prepared for the immediate correction.
Got a second?
Sure.
Home neighbors say aye.
Aye.
All right. Visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address accounts on any subject at this time. Is anyone present not on the agenda? All right. Right, here and act on a complaint from Mr. Bobby Jones at 608 Broadway concerning a plumbing bill. I believe you have a copy of that email, sir. Mr. Jones?
Yes. I have a bill here. I just simply don't look it. So now, believe it belongs to the city. She said, "Ma'am," and I have discussed this point. We have problems, we have to talk about this. Thank you, sir. Now, my problem goes back beyond a month ago. Where we first came, 10 years ago, about a year or so later, I let start in my alley, find a sewer water coming up, coming into the surface. And I can tell it wasn't red water, house stuff. I came down, called two girls out here and explained to them those leak out there. I went knock on, they still look for it, knock on, knock on, knock. Came back again, probably two, three weeks later, something like that. I'm sorry, that beginning, I'm going to come up today. I'll listen now, but we'll report. We didn't let them know about it. And it knocked on, it knocked on, it knocked on. I got back probably a third time, but exactly number of times without him to down, I don't remember it. But I came back again, expressing the fact we had leak out there, and it is becoming a health hazard simply. You know, it's somewhere. Then nothing was done, so I came back and I explained to them, "The stuff isn't done. I'm contacting the health department." I finally got something done. Now, about a year ago, my sewer, of course, would have ongoing sewer problems. So what I did, I replaced all the way under my house with a kitchen sink, all the way out to the alley, all the way down into the main sewer. My plumbing line was in 14, was completed, redone. Well, about a year later, started having problems with the problem again. I contacted the city, and that was on Sunday. This gentleman here came out and Jay-Z came out, looked at it, we took clean out. The brain used, a year old, he's not, isn't yours. And so Jay-Z come driving up, oh, Jay-Z, well, that man, that manhole there is running, and that manhole there is running, both in his alley. I did it. So I called the plumber. Plumber came out, we started slinging it down, running, I didn't, we just come up with, what could be chopped, had to tell us, we don't know that for sure. So we have to measure in the distance it's going, and it's like 16, 17 feet, I have injured it out, which is not my sewer. And he said, "Where the sewer?" He says, "In the city." Well, they were just down here, and they said there was manholes were running. So we went to the manhole on the kind of northwest side, and it has, we had to dig it out. It had dirt, you know, packed it around the lip, which couldn't raise it. This takes a while for this dirt to accumulate. So, well, okay, the plumber looked down and says, "This is your sewer line, does it come in?" I hope you had that in right here. So I just rolled them up to the side, couldn't find this manhole. So anyway, I got very, very irritated by it. And we found this guy, we came down, right, dirty, he had his time since, we called him and grabbed him out, royally. So he came up, and then he said, and he looked all over behind the church, or across street church, by the chaplain's house, everybody, he didn't know if he could find a manhole. So finally, they said, "Well, I guess the manhole must be on that house." So which told me, they didn't, I got to run around, they did not bother to, they just try and put it off. So finally, we got, got him out, they dug out, and they found one heck of a clog. Now, at that moment, let me start. As you know, water runs downhill. Mr. Mills' house, his tubhole is about two feet above mine, maybe more. And when he flushes his tubhole, it comes down, we share the same alley line. And when that line stopped up, that's where it comes to, my house. Now, I'm sure every one of you can understand the concept of water running downhill. Well, I'm going downhill. So then, now I've been conditioned to call a plumber to make the city, to verify to the city, say, "Look, I've had a plumber out here, this is not mine, you must do it." Because I've learned a long time here, contact the city doesn't do me good. Now, so anyway, I contacted plumber, plumber came out, now this was just recently, this this bill. He came out, did the same thing, he was going down into the city main, calling out, we don't know for sugar water. It appeared to be stripped t-shirts and other medicals, perhaps a line, we don't know. Perhaps what, other what, a lot of rubber gloves and stuff like that for medicine. That's usually medical field. So, anyway, at this point, they contacted plumber, I get glad they're cleaning out down here by, about the, all the parts deal. And they have runners make all that distance up. Then the plumber come in and told me, he said, "Go flush your commode." I got one of these modern commodes that use very little water. And I flushed it, and then I flushed it. Well, it turned okay. So then, she started washing it. Now we got a different story, we got a clog all over it. So I came down, looking for, to believe her here, and heard all this, I explained to what goes with one of them. Clyde came in, she called him, and he came in. And he said, "Well," he says, "It's going to be about two weeks before we can get to your sewer line." I explained to Clyde, that's Clyde, that's not what I'm just here. I was like, "Explain to Clyde, you're going to do it now." I've had all the crap, but the city can't put it. I told him, "It's not something being done, eight morning, I'm contacting the health department, and you need to claim to the health department why I'm getting two weeks to get my line made there." They did. Well, let me switch back to a moment to about a year ago, when he came out, told me.
Mr. Jones, I understand you're upset, but we do have a timeframe, okay? And so, I understand you're going to hear.
No worries, but this is not my bill simply.
I'm asking you to condense it, to speak about this one, that's all I'm asking you to say.
Well, we're, well, they are tied together, that same sewer line, man. Again, I, okay, I'm not talking about another house, another location, another city, I'm talking about the same sewer line. But anyway, here, the lady dug up my alley, which is, that's a year ago, and they broke the place out, and they run the snake out and cleaned out. Being on the end of the AM, they didn't install a clean out, a simple clean out. They had to hold them, all the stuff were there, maybe $300 or $400 more, and they'd have a clean out to where, all they had to do is run the snake in the opposite direction, as if 400 feet of another direction. They didn't do it.
They in the city?
In the city.
Are you talking this time or another time?
Oh, I'm talking about a year ago. Now, on this one here, they dug up down next to their lot, the Parson's, Parson's Church Church. And I've been, I saw what come out, it was a mess that came out of sewer line. And that monitor said it installed a clean out this time. But the city plan got being broke. You could say a whole, another, a whole digging and everything, a simple little clean up had been pulled up there in my alley. So this is why I'm saying, this is not mine, I've been conditioned, fact, I got to call a plumber to prove to city that the clog is there, it's not mine. And that's not right. And that's all I have to say.
So are you saying the city's responsible for what people put in the sewer?
I didn't put it there.
I know you didn't put it there, I asked you.
So am I responsible for it?
No.
No, sir. Not responsible for it.
We provide a line for it to float, we can't control what people put in.
Yeah, when, I just go through a history of 10 years of sewer problems.
Yes, sir.
Being put off, run around, and told stories about clean outs that aren't true. There was no clean out, but where he said it was, I mean, no manhole, where he said was running.
It's all here, all city here.
Yeah.
It was our fault.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
I'm through. This bill, um, just so I understand, it's a run sewer line that tap five foot into city main, and the city main stopped up. So what they did for four hours was what? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, this, and I'm not going, that's a big waste of time, I'm a human. The people who live behind me live up here, okay? Now, who's sewer's clog? Let's flush it from over. I'm the lowest yet. It's going to go to base. It brought trash into the mine. We had to figure out where that trash is coming from before he established. I don't, cannot explain to you why the plumber took four hours. I'm not a plumber.
Oh, yeah, I'm not either.
I'm talking, this is, but what my complaint is, is the crap you have to go through down here, just to get someone from the city to do what they're supposed to do. I pay my bill every month, you know, every month, and this is part of the deal, pay your bill, it'll keep your sewer going for you, you know? Your water running for you. Water's a crap here that we had to put in line filter in the main yard line. And I understand, you can't be responsible for that, nobody's asking me about it. But when I call the city, or contact the city in any manner to say, "Hey, my sewer is clogged, I don't want someone to be, well, it'd be too weak going to be out."
Right.
And that is pathetic to be told at. And next time I'm told that, oh, man, it's automatic, frustrating, that I need help the board to find out mine.
Sam, the problem I have with this is an absorbent plumber's charge.
I agree.
12 feet, two inches from his clean out to the city main, and he charges him $400.
Well, now, he was there quite a while, I don't know how long I did.
He was there four hours.
Was it for 12 feet, two inches? For a 12 foot, two inch clean out?
My line is four inches.
That's the man Sam might be going at.
And we invited him.
That sounds like too much.
We invited him to come to council. I called him Friday, right before we posted the agenda, and invited Toby to come, and I strongly suggested that he be here. And he called him, talked to his wife, and he called back and said.
Well, that's just absolutely ridiculous. That's who I'd be going at.
Real quick, Clyde, can you show them what we found in the main?
I saw it.
Well, the council is not standing. But I don't want to touch that.
This is more, looks more like strings. This is more like strips of material and cloth. The first time that we went up there and pulled all this stuff out, my thoughts was someone had washed a quilt or something like that, and ate them apart, because it had little strips of material, strings, all that stuff that's in these bags.
Not gold, right?
No, it's not gold, it's like t-shirt material or sheet material.
You say rubber gloves and some of that too?
There's some rubber gloves in there, you get those out of, they're everywhere in town.
But let me tell you, a washing machine pump would not pump that much stuff down.
Well, it's not going to all go down at one time. It's over a period of time, and once it hits its nerves and it keeps breaking loose, it's going to keep going, until finally it gets enough grease in it that it clogs it up.
Have we cleaned this line out long enough?
Yes.
Yes.
Almost a year ago, on the date, I was on vacation, and Steve took my guys up there, they dug it up in his alley, as he said, they ran the machine in it, got it unstopped, and 99% of the time, that's all we do, is we get it unstopped, and we don't have trouble anymore.
Excuse me, sir, they put a smaller line.
They did. And henceforth, we love to pay out of someone from up there who put paint out there in our alley, right exactly where that PVC was.
Did that to measure?
Huh?
I did that to measure.
I did that to measure, so I can determine the measurements, how far it is from your clean out to the main.
We're trying to figure out why it takes four hours to go just 12 feet to that main.
Well, I, I, I'm sure you, sir, I get no kickback from this.
No.
I'm as unhappy with plumbers as you are, but I mean more that this morning, I'm unhappy with the city and the runaround that I've been getting. And I can assure you, if I ever get told again, it'd be two weeks.
Okay.
No, sir. Right, it'll hit the fan.
Let me explain to you how dig test works. You have to call them before you dig. That's 72 hours that you have to wait, regardless.
Even if your comment is soft, Jeff?
Even if the water rains busted in waters gushing out in the air, you wait till they come mark the lines. And it can take up to 72 hours.
If we don't wait, we get fined. So we have to do that in order to follow.
So we get drawn down, strive to use the rest of it?
Well, we're trying to tell you what we're under restrictions to follow, okay? We're understanding yours, you have to understand what we have to do in order to follow procedure. That's what we're trying to explain to you. He wasn't trying to tell you he's putting it off, but you have to have a 72-hour dig test. Meaning, there's other lines, there's other gas lines, cable lines, internet lines, whatever's in there. If we touch or tear any of that up, we're responsible, and therefore, we get those fines to have that fixed and repaired.
If we hit the gas line that's six inches away from this sewer line, most are fined.
Without calling a dig test?
Yes.
It's going to cost you $10,000.
Yes.
No.
That's a minimal. So.
Somebody wants me to do this, you pay me $10,000 for the fine, we'll dig it up. So until then, we'll move away.
So is there no recourse for us, trying to think about the P trigger, because we might have to back turn here again, with the lines stopped up? Is there no way to find out what's causing that?
Outside of sending two guys around and just checking manholes every day, and putting the jet machine in, I mean, it's not, there's no practical way to know. The only way you know the sewer main, the city main is backed up, is if it goes into someone's property. That's really the only telltale sign. And it can be a number of things. When I first talked to Clyde about this, he gave me probably one of the best answers, the city did not put whatever that is into our main. Went into, now, I understand they didn't either as well. But at this point, we're looking to pay the $400 bill for four hours of labor to go 15 feet out of snake. Like you, Bob, my concern is with Toby, and quite frankly, I'd like to know who I took four hours to go 15 feet.
Brian, I'm going to interrupt you. Have you seen this situation with other residents with a similar bill as this?
I've seen both plumbers, Jones and Moore, blame the city for plumbing issues that really are not responsibility of the city.
Okay, let me respond to that. The, well, the city is responsible, in my case, the city's land, they called, he just demonstrated to you the crap that's pulled out, and so.
Yes, sir, and we also explained that we didn't put that.
You must take that into care, it wasn't my last, it wasn't the city's line, and he will take it.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, I've given you more than more opportunity to get to the side of the story. Let us please discuss it so we can carry on, please, sir. That's all I'm asking.
I don't know for sure where Miller's ties in, but there's Galvans, there's Lawton, and then Vansels, and then Miller's, there's only three houses on Seventh Street. He's in the middle where your house used to be down the corner of the apartment, there's not any houses up from there. So there's basically.
You know, one of those, one of those couples you just mentioned, river is sick, remember? And they passed. If I had to guess, maybe from there, and hopefully this would be a one-time event, considering this type of material.
I hope so. I mean, we put a clean out in, a clean out in down the alley, because where he was wanting to put one in his house, the machine does better, it pulls better than it pushes, so we can run it up there and pull everything back from, from you to there. We wanted to put a manhole in, but when we got in there, the water and the gas and the sewer were all two talks together, we couldn't put a manhole in, so we just put in a six-inch clean out, we can get our machine down in it and run the sewer. A manhole would have been preferred, because that way you could go down in there and got this couple of stuff out, but.
Even if we had a clean out a year ago, it still wouldn't have stopped this issue?
We did clean it out.
No, but even if we installed a clean out, it still wouldn't have stopped.
Not where they dug it up, no.
Yeah.
They may have just pushed the photo down the line, and we're close enough now where we can go from the manhole that we have found up to that one, and we go back, we can go back and forth and on back and forth.
Yeah.
Because when they were up there a year ago, they chased that, they got through it, they chased it for a week, they ran every manhole from there all the way down to Park, and they pulled that rags and stuff out of every manhole that they rented in.
A year ago?
A year ago.
So it's the same material or similar?
Similar, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns?
Is there an option where we can debate Toby directly?
Where we can what?
Debate Toby directly.
I invited him to be here, he did not come. He told me definitively, or told me definitively on Friday, he was not going to be able to make it. And then he called this afternoon about 3:30 and said he had a job out of town, and he would not be able to make it. But I did extend an invitation to him to come. My issue is twofold. One, four hours of labor for $400 to go 15 feet. In my estimation, the moment Toby knew that this was the city main, regardless of what allegedly had been said, you pick the phone up and you call us, and then we'll take over from there. It may not get done that afternoon, but it will get done. Number two, how are you going to handle this the next time someone puts a rag or whatever in a sewer line? We already have a practice that I describe as practice of getting phone calls about plumbing bills that we had nothing to do with. Some citizens understand that, some choose to believe whatever they've muddled. I think that's a very, very bad precedent to start doing, is to start paying bills.
There's no word right there.
And I feel for Mr. Jones. I disagree with his assessment that he's been getting the runaround. I definitely understand his frustration. But at the end of the day, the city didn't put the, whatever that debris is, in the main. We fished it out, we took measures to try to prevent this next time, or at least make it easier. But the fact of the matter is, he could go home right now, and if it's still in that line, it's going to back the house up again. Whoever's uphill from him is causing the issue, and we don't know who it is. This is one of those reactive things, and there's really no way to be proactive about it.
Okay, then that's what bad is mine. What am I going to do the next time?
The next time it backs up? You can call City Hall. In fact, I'll give you my cell phone number.
I appreciate that.
Next time, you're going to be the person that call. I'm not going to give it to you in public, but I'll give it to you in private.
I may drop them way out, dude.
Not my ladies, sir.
Hey.
Um, is there a way that we can technically table this and talk to Toby directly?
Yes. Yes, it is.
What I'm going to suggest is, okay, we're going to be able to. Does that make sense?
I didn't, I don't, I don't hear what.
We're talking about, we're talking about tableing this right now, and then talking to Toby directly about this bill, about how exactly it was four hours. I mean, I'd feel a lot better if I get some understanding along those lines, I'll see exactly what it took.
I'd say at least, I mean, 15 minutes, you could, I mean, you put the, you put your snake in, you run it 12 feet, whatever, whatever it is, and if you hit the city sewer and you hit it, you hit something, then that sewer line's backed up, and you pull it out, and Toby should know better than to call City Hall. I mean, Toby's called you a number of times about lines backing up, so it's not a foreign concept, or Jones, or even 3D.
The plumber's calling me instead of calling City Hall.
There was no need for him to chase this, and even if he found it, he wouldn't know how to fix it, and he doesn't even have tools to fix it with. Correct? And he couldn't even get into our service system anyway.
Not that far away.
So what's that going to do to Bobby? Reduction of the bill, a zero of that of the bill, what's that going to do for Bobby?
Well, I think it's definitely, well, it's definitely a minimum reduction, but the maximum of zero and a half.
So Bobby, if your bill were reduced, would you pay it?
I tell you, I wouldn't have a problem 50/50 on this, with, with the understanding, if you're not in town, I just come down here and I explain to sewer whoever, I have a sewer problem, and we don't get this two-week crack again.
You'll have the, we'll have to call dig test, I'm not going to go through digging your alley, but, but yeah.
With clean outs.
With clean out, yeah, with the clean out, it'd be a problem.
See, I didn't know we were going to have to dig. All I worried was it was clean.
Well, yeah, we're going to have to dig.
But Brian, this puts a ball part of this issue back to Toby's core.
I agree with that.
Look, say, that's who we need to deal with, and this bill hopefully reduce 50%.
And also the fact that they put in a smaller pipe because they didn't have the larger one.
Well, they broke it, broke it out, right? I tell you what, this is exactly where your green lines are. Go look at them, go, I walked out there, look, and they had the PVC, it was smaller than the old pipe, and they had to reduce, rub, reduce on this, rubber used on this, and the company ended with mine, along to it. It's right where your green lines are.
Let me explain that to you.
Okay.
PVC. PVC pipe is smaller OD than clay pipe. It's going to look like a smaller pipe.
Well, he told us it was.
I don't know who told you what, but they can't put smaller pipe in there. The ODs, the IDs have to match. Those rubbers that go on the ends, they go from clay to PVC. And if it's a six-inch line, you have to put six inches in there. You can't put a fuller or smaller line in between them. They won't make connections to make that work.
It just appears to be smaller because of PVC.
Right. PVC is a smaller OD than clay.
They go out from one...
It's PVC. It's PVC. Don't take all these bands, too. Look, see, here's the bad part. All of this right here could have been saved. Two years ago, I would come down, you got the courtesy service. But you know, I didn't get it. And it sticks in my craw for him to tell me that manhole, everybody, that manhole, and those. There was no manhole for this. Just to be honest with you.
Do not call the city if there is a problem.
So, it has stuck in my craw, and I have no confidence now.
The manhole you're talking about on the end up there? It falls back on me because I sent my guys up there.
Big disaster.
And they popped the manhole, and it's running. And I asked them if the manhole was running, and they said yes. I went back up there and looked. That sewer doesn't come down that alleyway at any. They did not know that. They opened it. Water was flowing through it. They put the lip back.
You worry about the manhole, the corporate under the house. It wasn't open easy, was it?
We still have it down now.
We've already beat the horse, correct? All right, we're beating that horse, guys. So, let's talk about the structural mass problem. I tell you guys, being the city, monthly, man never is much. And I know you, I get water for most part, no real complaints, but my gosh, when I have problems, I don't like that you're running.
Mr. Jones, we've heard every bit of it. We understand it. We're going to make means, okay? We're going to contact and do as we say.
That's all we're focused on this day for. So, that's what we're trying to do. And Brian said he'd give you his cell phone number. If you have that problem again, and we'll get on it. What we're going to do today is we're going to go to table this matter and take this up to Toby directly to see exactly what it is. If you're willing to go 50/50, I'll be honest with you, I don't care if you go 50/50, we're not going to pay $400. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I didn't talk to him how much to make the bill.
No, we don't have... Back to the kickback thing. We know that. I'm not, nobody, I didn't even think that.
No, the table issue, that's a bit with Toby.
Second, on favor say aye. Clarification, you want me to visit with Toby, or you want to come in front of council? I'd like, I'd like to be part of it.
I'm not here yet.
Yeah.
So, no matter what happens, don't pay that bill.
Yes, that's what I was going to say, is please don't pay that.
Don't pay that bill.
Okay. Am I to come back next city meeting?
If we don't have an answer for you by that time, you can...
The next city council meeting will be August the 7th.
August 7th, okay.
If you haven't heard from us, please feel free to come here with dessert and chili, if you haven't heard from us, I think.
Come by tomorrow, and I'll give you my cell phone number.
What time? What time you got? You got a document to talk about?
Yeah, I have sent an inch.
Come by, we all... Give to her, out of her office, and she'll be able to do it. I trust that she will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I'll be right back. So, that was table, ending Toby. All right. Here an act on request from Amy Plant to repair the sidewalks in the 100 block of Eighth Street. And you are present.
I'm here. And my name is spelled A-I-M-E.
A-M-I-A.
A-I-M-E.
Got it.
It's different. Well, thank you all for letting me speak here today. Again, my name's Amy Plant. My children and I moved to Bounder about three and a half months ago. I'm the new owner of a building located at 17 Hutchins Avenue. Many people know this building as one of the first structures to be erected in this town. It has a rich history, and I mean, please report that the restoration and renovation of the upstairs and parts of the downstairs have gone very well. I have the privilege of having many local professionals involved in this project, as well as the tremendous support from so many new friends and neighbors in the downtown business district. I have concerns that the community might take issue with an outsider coming in and occupying one of your beautiful old bank buildings. But the community has really made the kids on here feel very welcome, and I thank you all for that. The reason I am here today is to address the conditions of the sidewalk on Eighth Street. But before I do that, I'd like to throw in another concern of mine. An old metal covering that was a chute for coal goes into the basement of my building. It's on the city sidewalk just outside my door. The metal covering is not sealed very well, and when it rains, it goes down into the basement. I don't know if that's something that the city would handle or not, but ideally, this could be addressed at the same time the sidewalks are. Here's a picture of that metal covering there. Before I circulate photos of the sidewalk condition on Eighth Street, I want to use this opportunity to address what I've been told are the reasons why city council wouldn't be interested in taking care of this matter. First off, I was told that the sidewalk in front of my building has been viewed and that it looks to be in good condition. I can tell you that my five-year-old Joey and I disagree. I have tripped on those potholes, and my son has fallen several times. I'm not a clumsy person. In fact, you can find me spending much of my time up on a 12-foot ladder with a paintbrush or a hammer drill. This is a legitimate issue for myself, my family, and my business. I am a single mom with three children and three jobs. And those three jobs do not include the preservation and restoration and build-out of the building I purchased to both live in and run my businesses out of. I assure you that I have much better things to do with my time than stand here and bring up issues that don't truly exist. Here are photographs of Eighth Street. Eighth Street starts in front of my building, then goes across the way over to the model building, and then moves around the block.
The Eighth Street?
Yes. I'm not all around that block.
You say the front of your building. Are you talking about the main?
What I mean, yeah, when I say the front, it's side. Yeah, because I'm used to accessing my building from the side. So, when I say the front, I mean kind of the front door of the residence.
The Eighth Street side?
Yes, yeah, the Eighth Street side. As you look at these photos, I'd like you to consider as the street and its businesses continue to grow, and as we're inviting tourists and the community to come out and enjoy Eighth Street by way of farmers markets, Halloween and other holiday festivities, theater events, shopping, dining, these kinds of things are going to come up. Now that I've shown the uneven surfaces and the potholes in fact do exist, I'll address the other perceived roadblock of this issue of getting sidewalks fixed. It has been communicated to me that the position of this council likely be that to execute the new sidewalk construction would be too disruptive to Eighth Street business owners. I'm a pretty proactive person, and I have a different position. I submit that it would be in the best interest of the city to take care of the problem before it gets worse and before there are more businesses established to disrupt. This leads me to my next comment or suggestion, if you will. I'm being told that it's the opinion of city council and our officials that projects like this will be too disruptive to business owners, and yet I am a business owner. If that is the opinion of our city officials, then you're not speaking for me. In fact, I went around and asked several business owners on Hutchins Avenue if the sidewalk work done by Techside years ago was utterly disruptive. And if so, do they feel that that disruption was worth it to know that their customers had safe, level ground to walk on, or to push rollers on? Here are some answers from Hutchins business owners. "We were not in business when that took place. I cannot hunt." "However, my mother did fall and copper face badly due to the bad sidewalk seven years before we had been redone." "It is good reflection on the city to appear well-capped and safe." "It will affect Eighth Street for a short time, but will help the businesses long-term to have good appearance and safe to walk down the street without tripping." "Most things that are beneficial have a cost. In this case, the benefits far outweigh the negatives." "Another merchant said she was around when the sidewalks were being done, but she doesn't remember it, so it must not have been much of an issue."
Amy?
Yes.
Do you have a problem stating who's saying these things?
No, I go with Adam.
Or just listen to anyone?
Sure, I understand. And the first quotation there with the merchant that was, had the mother who had fallen, was Stan Gill. And the merchant who said she was not around when the sidewalks were being done, but she doesn't remember it, so it must not have been much of an issue, was Carolyn O'Reilly. And then another response I received was from Myra, a merchant that wasn't there for the sidewalk reparations, that had been there for other invasive maintenance down on the sidewalk, and that I was told it wasn't a good deal. "I think the expectation is that having a business is going to come with some challenges. Things will inevitably need to get done. Maintenance is or should be a part of that expectation." "I also reached out to my fellow Eighth Street business owners and asked if they felt this would be too disruptive to support." "I didn't hear back from any of the business owners on Eighth Street other than for one to say she would be here at tonight's meeting, and she is not here." She's on her way. She is, okay. "I reached out to my fellow Eighth Street business owners to get a better understanding of if my views, my vision of what the street could be are shared by others. At some point, this community needs to ask themselves, what do we want this town to look like? Are we okay with the rapid deterioration of our historical buildings? Do we want to preserve this rich history and responsible way for future generations to enjoy? What do we want our streets and sidewalks to look like? What are we willing to do to fund these and other projects that would legitimize this town and the assets surrounding communities and beyond, referring about economic growth and prosperity to the businesses and residents of Bounder?" "I spent a lot of time getting to know people in this community. There's tremendous potential here. This community is strong. Your residents are some of the most considerate, hardworking, and admirable people I've ever met. I was made to feel that coming here today wouldn't be a good use of my time. I considered staying at home and digging my head in the sand. It's intimidating enough to stand up here. I'm nervous. But to be told what the opinion is of this council before I've had a chance to be heard was disheartening. I truly hope this is not an opener for folks in the community. I don't know what will come of this sidewalk issue. I can say that if there is an injury due to the uneven surface and potholes, I know that I raised the concerns to the city and made them aware of the issue. I've gone as far as I can go with it. There are a lot of improvements to be made around town. I understand that. Progress needs to begin somewhere. There's a lot of money and effort being put into Eighth Street. And again, as businesses grow, and as we continue to invite tourists and the community to come out and enjoy Eighth Street by way of these markets, holiday festivities, theater events, shopping, and dining, I submit that we make some of these meaningful changes to areas like Eighth Street where this progress is more likely to be seen and enjoyed by the community, where folks from out of town will be spending their money and feeding their loved ones. What's good for Bounder business is good for the Bounder community. Not to recognize that with the understatement. As far as Eighth Street is concerned, I'd like to see reparations made to the sidewalk. My home is here. I own a business here. I pay taxes here. My three children attend school. As far as Eighth Street real estate goes, my building takes up 125 feet of Eighth Street. I am also a key figure in the recreation and restoration of the bank building owned by Katie and Paul Morrow, at which inevitably will house another business and takes up about 95 feet of Eighth Street. I am also the new general manager of the Texas Theater, 31 feet there. So, the next time anyone is asked what the opinion is of Bounder business owners or Bounder residents or the Bounder community, please include historic preservation for progress and meaningful change to that answer, because I'd like to be included in that. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time."
So, Amy, historic preservation in this town. Who ranks at the very top that cares about the history of this town?
The people of the community.
That would be Bob O'Ratt.
Oh, yes.
He has a head full of knowledge. And how does he feel on your issue?
This particular issue, I did not get a response from him on. But I've had conversations with Bob O'Ratt many times. He's a good friend of mine.
He would give you an opinion on your...
No, I didn't get a response from him. You know, I had reached out to several business owners a couple of days ago. I didn't realize that this was going to be something... I just learned that the opinion of city council would likely be that it would be too disruptive. I've never interpreted positive growth and kind of road maintenance and things like that as a disruption to business. I understand that it can.
Bob, what's concerning about what it would do to the foundation of his building? Because, Brian, how deep would you have to go if you put in new sidewalks?
The whole way down to gray, you're going at least 12, 18 inches, Steve.
Rock, whatever gray you need. You'd have to go... You know, I can see that that could create a problem with our old buildings on Eighth Street. I really can see that.
I'd like to see an engineer report on that.
That's probably...
I mean, yeah.
That would be the right way to handle that.
This would not be a, just to be clear, this would not be a project that city staff would do. This would have to be engineered.
Right, right, I understand that.
And...
But I just don't think everybody on Eighth Street's on board with this.
Well, again, it's an expectation that any business owner would have. I understand there are business owners on Eighth Street that are...
60 feet, seven, 10 feet.
Yeah, yeah. So, again, you know...
I would be kicking and screaming if you messed with my sidewalk. I really would. I'm totally opposed to that.
Okay.
Because of my glass, all the glass front I have, and the foundation of the old building. I'd really be opposed to that.
Well, look, many of the projects have occurred before on that street. I understand it is very old, and there are a lot of things that we would need to look at, an engineer would need to look at. But, you know, if the city were not opposed to having an engineer come out and take a look at it and see what the potential risks are that would be involved in that, then that would then be something that you would approach the merchants and the building owners on Eighth Street with that information, and then we would probably take it from there, right? I mean, if we had someone to tell us that it might then be all right.
The big thing is, have you seen the budget? Have you looked at it?
I have, yeah. I've seen the budget before.
Okay, I understand. And I'm not disregarding you being here, but you've been here three and a half months, and you're ready to rock and roll. That's awesome. But right now, we've been working on infrastructure in the city that hasn't been done in the last 30 to 50 years. So, that's at the top. When we have sidewalks, and you can still walk down the street and they're not crumbling and falling away, there's one, one block further over from you on Ninth Street that is in bad repair. And they are going to fix it when they're doing their remodel. When we walk down Eighth Street, and those are not...
The heads, the bits, the bits.
Yes.
Each bit.
Yes.
So, they're going to go in and tear up city sidewalks and repair them?
They've already come to the city. They are getting an engineer, and they are going through the process, and they are thankful.
Okay.
Are there other options available other than the 15 inches deep? You can rip them out, all that concrete and...
To do...
Other resurfacing options?
Not good ones. You can resurface it, and if you just put a half-inch lip on top of that surface, you're going to have closure issues on doors for the sidewalk. It literally goes all the way up to these square ones. That concrete is 80 years old. But it's brittle and frail. I don't know if it has the strength to come in there and just handle what you would have to do to, I don't know, saw some cracks up in the front bobsaw.
But Brian, you know, the step one mile ago, the stone was worn down from footprints over many, many years. But that concrete is already flaked. You know, if there were any effort construction for the new... for the new debris grid, it would really take a toll on that.
Yes.
The very strong foundation of that building.
All right, but then again, you're going back to this sort of deterioration of what's our day's esteem. And evidently, this is going to be a bigger issue than it is now. Is it something that we get an engineer in on? And see if it's something that we could budget for? Maybe not in the short term, but in the long term? If it's something that we would consider doing at a later date?
I would also suggest that it's not just Eighth Street. It's not just the 500 linear feet on one side of Eighth Street and the opposite 500 linear feet. It's Seventh Street.
I know, I've seen the street.
It's on the other side of Hutchins. It's Sonnenberg's office. It's the Fols office.
Right.
It's the Woodhand Building. It's not just one block.
I understand. But what I suggested is that, again, there's a lot of effort and a lot of money going into Eighth Street. The theater's going to get a facelift. We intend to bring a lot of tourism onto that street and that would benefit the businesses up and down Eighth Street. We have festivities. We have farmer's markets. I'd be nervous. Lisa had a little face painting booth. My daughter paints faces for free at the farmer's market. There are little kids running up and down, but I'd be nervous. So there is an issue there. You've seen the pictures. I've made you aware of it. And I've gone as far as I can here.
I think it's something we can look at.
Yeah.
We're definitely not, this issue, I mean, I think, I don't know, long term, we'd be absolutely right. Eventually, something's going to have to be done. But I think we just get to work our options.
And that's all I ask.
Yeah.
Matt, we just had Carson Porch Lab work. 20 by 30. And that sidewalk's probably about 10 feet. That's 500 linear feet. Carson came in at about $10 a square foot, but that's us doing the labor. That's us taking the baccals in there. To be clear, if we did pursue this project, I think, I want to let you know from the outset, we are not prepared as a city staff to take out this.
No, no.
So that $10 a square foot, we're probably going to double that to about 20.
Well, that's $10 a square foot. Assuming we have to replace, go down 18 inches and replace all. I'm just saying.
Yeah, this is worst case scenario. This is.
Right. I'm just saying, from a city perspective, it's always something that we can, and not just Eighth Street, but all of the streets, it's something that we can start looking at to figure out exactly how we proceed forward with this issue.
Yeah. The compliance is not without merit. I mean, you're dead on something that we're going to have to do at some point. We were, this plan called Wednesday afternoon to get on the agenda for this. And we had a conversation Friday morning. I can get Ken Martin to come down and do an engineering study on it. Costs a couple thousand bucks to get that done. And then we can go from there. I'm looking at, just to, like I said, back to the napkin number, you're probably looking at $600,000 for this side of Hutchins and maybe another, I don't know, $400,000 to do Sonnenberg. Probably Kit's going to want a sidewalk. Dollar General's going to want their sidewalk done. Bickel, where the old car dealership is.
If they're going to have those same streets.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you just got to figure out.
And you have to start somewhere. You can't tackle everything all at once. I just propose that Eighth Street, that I consider Eighth Street to be giving some new life. And it would be neat to see some positive growth and fixing of some of these deteriorating roads in that area.
And honestly, I've got a lot of good options. Rather than, to Bob's issue, I agree. It could potentially create some significant issues. So what are the options? I don't even know what the technology is out there. What are the?
I can get Ken. We can do an engineer report. He can send somebody down if y'all want to.
But it's going to be a multi-year plan. I mean, it's nothing that we could do in one year. I mean, it's going to be a multi-year plan.
It's going to soar, streets right now.
I mean, without some sort of other form of revenue, which is, the question is, we all want this done. How to take it? I mean, that's at the end of the day. And that's why I keep throwing out around a million bucks. Because that is, it's about seven years worth of street paper.
I know where we could get a lot of it, of course.
Oh, I know exactly where we could get it. You and I are on the same, and it can be dedicated exactly for this. I mean, you and I are thinking the same thing. There's a tax that we can, we can use part of our civil tax to go toward downtown restoration.
Is that coming up, number?
No, it's not. It's just not going until next number is run valid. If it gets on there at all. And that's something, that's a comment that I can hand. But I will say this, I think, I think it's something that needs to be done. Eighth Street is a project. And not to make this a football-centric thing, but we're in West Texas and you're in Bounder, so get used to football. On a Friday afternoon, that place is packed. My block will go into a man's shop and drop 200 bucks every week, and I got the receipts to prove it. But that's what you're telling me. Eighth Street is kind of the anchor of that. Higginbotham's is the anchor of Eighth Street.
Yes.
The theater could be. I think at one point it probably was. But I don't want to discredit what Curiosity does, what Dollar General does, what Sonnenberg does. I don't want this to be an Eighth Street-centric project. I want this to be a complete downtown project. Gonzalez's Restaurant down here. Who's the CPA?
We've got Todd Freeman, CPA. And we've got Michael Conrad's office on Seventh Street.
Yes. So there's another number of businesses outside of that 500 linear feet of Eighth Street
Sure.
that need to be.
And so long as we're consulting with an engineer on one part of that downtown area, you might as well, like you said, incorporate all of it into that mix. And information gathering is going to be.
Right, I mean, the first thing you have to know is, what is it going to be? Right? You can't even start a project to, you know, what is it going to entail? But we definitely have to take a look at it because I think we're all, I mean, we're in Bounder. I just get chewed in on Facebook a lot more about Bob's than I do about sidewalks. But now sidewalks are coming in. Let's get it all in here and let's take a look.
I did talk to a number of businesses on Eighth Street. They did not lend their support to this project. One did. A number did not. The timeframe is what's very concerning to them. Because regardless if we do it or especially if a contractor does it, it's not going to be a disruptive thing for a week or two. You're looking at 90 to 120 days. Because if it is in fact a clean out, and I think, I think Ken's going to come, probably come back and say, you can't really repair this. You can probably cut out a section, but you're still going to have issues of the whole thing. So if it's a complete clean out, tear out, you're looking at three weeks minimum of ripping all the sidewalks out. So the clock starts there. So you have no sidewalk to get to. And not only that, I don't know if the door is going to be, I mean, how high is the door than, what's that, Greg, 12 inches? I mean, it's going to be a logistical nightmare getting people in and out of the foot traffic, in and out of businesses.
Was this not an issue? Because I approached the businesses on Hutchins and they didn't do the sidewalks. They cut up, replaced the trees in those boxes.
The curbs. They did the curbs, the handicap entrances, all the stuff really on the outside. They didn't come all the way up. So it's really from what the boxes, banners out.
But it was not, you know, what I had understood from conversations that I had with them that it was disruptive, you know, or could have been disrupted, but it was something that they understood was a product of having been in business on a city street. You know, that there was an expectation of at some point in time, the city's going to have to do some maintenance. It's just the reality.
Well, we do a lot of maintenance, so.
I understand this is a base.
The state comes in and, you understand, that whole highway out there, that might be the state's, but who takes care of it? We do. Who pays for all the repairs and the upkeep and the maintenance and the trees? We do. That's the state did. All those new bridges, you know, yeah, we signed off on it. We asked for it. Guess what? We still get to help maintain it. Okay? So yes, we do do a lot of maintenance. In our, in our street career, they consider themselves to be the janitors of the city.
No, I never said that they didn't.
No, no, no.
Didn't do any maintenance.
Yeah, there's a lot of maintenance in those. Clyde, what exactly did they tear out over there on Hutchins?
It was from the front of the buildings to the street.
That's what Bob was saying. She agreed.
It went all the way from the front of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Every one of those doors.
From the front to the street. But what's the grade change for the streets in front of the building? Did they have to lower the street? Or did they have to? I mean, they didn't lower the building, so.
No, they made the sidewalks level with the curb. They didn't do the curb and gutter. They just did from the curb.
Curb back.
And those buildings are as old as.
And it was, it was an undertaking.
Yes.
Can be done. It'd be interesting to see the data back from the map project. State text out. We have some information on the engineering challenges that they have with those historic buildings over there.
They have the same challenges.
And save some money there.
You come up with a million bucks and get done. They do.
Well, not one year. But I don't think there's anything wrong with.
No.
Take a look at it and saying, you know.
I'll get, I can, if you guys want to, if you can get Ken to do an engineering study on it to find out what it would cost, how do the, what are our options on the sidewalk?
Right.
Texas, I just have program numbers that would help take us in that.
I mean, it is, you know, I'm not, I don't know how to judge it working it about streets and everything else the city has to get done. But I will tell you, if you run downtown or if you run a bicycle downtown, it's a problem. So, I mean, it is an issue, but some of the city streets are an issue too if you want to run down. So we're working on getting all that stuff fixed. I mean, we're not going to get 100% done up, but I don't think there's anything wrong with just looking at a plan. Just in the prioritizing what we can do and what we can't do.
I can certainly put a plan together. My indication in this plan on Friday was, I wouldn't expect, I was not going to expect the council to just say, okay, here's the checkmark, go do it. Like I said, we got this on Wednesday and we posted it on Friday. So as you'll see later on the agenda, I've been pretty busy since Thursday, Friday. But I agree with you that we can get the engineering going, find out what it costs. I can present you guys options. We can try to schedule something into the budget, but again, without some sort of funding, you're looking at, you're selling a lot more metal buildings.
Well, hopefully that comes true.
I hope it does too.
And you've got to ship them from down.
Call the agent.
Call the agent.
Call the agent. To give you an indication, we raised taxes last year. Eight percent generated an extra $85,000. So.
Well, the sales tax piece, the sales tax change, if it has potential.
Yes.
It's not going to be near sound potential? Or it's going to be potential?
I think, I think the sales tax, and the thing I like about the avenue you're talking about, it's not just sidewalks.
Right.
Because.
Sidewalks, streets.
Well, if you open up that, you can do things to the fascia. You can do outside improvements, things of that nature. What Sylvia did at her restaurant, there would be funding available to do those things. One of the things, one of the shopkeepers on Eighth Street suggested was they go halfway. City goes halfway and the business goes halfway. That could be something that we could do to maybe expedite the passing. But I want to have three fourths or more of the owner's consent to that before you do it. I don't want to do it like they did used to do streets where you had one house that curb and gutter and nothing and then picks it up. And some other concerns are, while we are grandfathered in, you're going to have some ADA compliance issues there as well. Right now, we're ADA compliant and then we're going to have to bring everything up to code. And again, that would be an additional cost. So. First and foremost, let's just get the engineer report, look at it, see if there's any plans or other options for repair or change, and see what they say and we'll go from there. I'll call you in in the morning. All right. Thanks for this plan.
If anybody wants to.
Did you, do you have any comments?
I was, first of all, going to thank Amy for joining in Eighth Street business. I'm excited to have somebody else excited. But on a different note, we have lost several businesses in the last year and I think a lot of the businesses that have happened here through years are really struggling right now. And I think for my personal business and all the business owners that have approached me in the last few days, this is definitely not a good year to look at tearing up any sidewalks downtown. As a chamber director, I think it's a terrible year to tear up sidewalks because we're getting trash cans and benches and banners downtown, which some of us have thought for for years.
Yeah.
So I think those things are going to in turn make more cars stop and earn more sales tax. And maybe after some time with earning more sales tax, then definitely revisit some sidewalk-type improvements downtown. I just don't think we're there yet.
Well, we're over halfway through the year. Just getting the engineer report is going to take at least three to six months, so it's not going to jump up on us this year. I mean, it's been brought to our attention. We're going to look at it. We're going to go forward with that.
Well, and I would suggest that what would be more important to me than benches and flags would be the safety of my customers coming to me.
You're not going to have any customers if they don't stop them down. And that sounds really negative, but that's the bottom line.
Maybe you can do internet shows, don't you?
Yes.
So you don't have customers coming into your building?
I also have a storefront, no, I'm building out the, the building right now. But the storefront is, you know, it's going to be tied in with that e-commerce site.
Amanda.
Yes, Amanda.
With the exception, with me included. Who do you find opposed on Eighth Street?
Every single person that I have to.
You, myself, you and others also.
Every, every other business that has spoken to me about it, but.
Have you known anything about Higginball?
I heard he was very against it.
Well, we're still gonna pursue it, look at it and then see what the cost is. I mean, we don't know until we ask and look into it, that's what we committed to do, so that's what we will do.
Y'all want to put a cap on the engineering report, my financial wise, or are you gonna just?
Well, how about you just go find out how much the engineering report's.
And then we'll say yes or no.
Don't tell them just, you know, hey, take your time.
Yeah, it's expensive, I don't even go that far.
Well, he gave us the ballpark, he's done it before.
Yeah. I'll get a ballpark number.
I mean, honestly, I'm just, I'm actually interested in what the options are.
Right.
I'm just looking at what the options are. I mean, if full tear out is the only option, that's the only option, but if it's not full tear out.
If there's a middle ground.
I mean, there's, there's cities that have to face this before, right? I mean.
Amanda, I admire you for trying to diversify, you're having wholesale on the building beside you and all that stuff. You do what you gotta do.
Yes, their mindset's like it is.
All right. Motion? Or you're, you're gonna take action to, you're gonna offer to me to do an engineering study?
Well.
Or just?
Motion, or contact the engineer.
Yeah, to look at.
You have to look at the options first.
Some table pending engineering study.
Yeah. Make the motion be table pending the discussion of options and potential engineering study.
Second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. All right, discuss an act of passing order for the city officers' election on November seventh, two thousand seventeen.
I made that motion.
The second you did.
You want second to motion?
Sure. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the quick motion, you sure you want? Considerable are building permits, I believe you have two. Should we change?
Nursing and rehab of eighteen hundred North Broadway. Want to build a ten by twelve by seven, I've taken home to the Ford check. And many Cortez, four hundred ceiling. Want to build a carport on back of her house, ten by twenty-five. Put them over there.
All setbacks. Me, Cortez, Renee?
Yep.
That's Renee Cortez?
No.
Oh. When you say those were named. It happens, it really.
Make the motion we approve.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
He's got a date.
I know.
All right, here's the police activity monthly report from Chief Staley.
Well, July has been busy. As we all heard from you. But Jim was also busy too. Think this is the most arrests obtained out of this department in the month. They had twenty-five arrests.
In June?
In June. I wouldn't, I counted at the jail three times myself. So, ten of the arrests are double arrests. Five of them were alcohol related, DWI, stuff like that. Uh, the rest warrants, stuff like that. But just let y'all know, I mean, twenty-five arrests, that's being twelve, fifteen, most, we've had twenty-five arrests. On top of that, eighty-six citations with eight grand, over eight grand in court, uh, court files. I've done your chief school, certified through within the chief.
You were certified with what?
You were certified. We moved forward from the day. I looked into body cameras, I purchased body cameras for the department, they'll come out of the budget. Capital expenditures, they're not gonna be that much. I think to get started, it's roughly five, six thousand dollars to get the whole department, including animal control, a body cam. So. It's not that much. I know the federal government, state exchanges, they set aside money for it. But with all the restrictions and everything you have to go through on the red tape, it's more of a hassle than just a buyout. So, I'm gonna head and do that.
Just out of curiosity, on the video on the body camera. Is that uploaded to the cloud or?
The best one we have is uploaded to a secure cloud through the company.
Okay. Flip the turnkey.
Yeah.
I just think Cory missed on servers again.
Yeah. Paying a little bit extra money and having to file, not have the headache, we're good.
Good.
It's the future.
Yeah, I mean, all videos are stored for more than ninety days unless we say they can save. And then we send them, so. What else, that's about it? You know, very month in January, we've had two major thefts from Tolliver Brothers, stolen thefts. We have caught one gentleman in connection with them, charged him. We're still trying to gather the evidence for the other theft. Around July fourth weekend, there was one set of tires in Marin stolen off a Chevrolet pickup, July tenth, a week later, a set of GNC tires stolen. Luckily, he decided he wanted to shoplift at Walmart and we came out. So, and he had all the evidence with him. So, he helped us, he helped us tremendously. Uh, we did recover one set in San Angelo. I went to San Angelo today to chase down another league, but they already got rid of them. So, I don't know if we can ever find those other tires. Probably on the side road, found it somewhere at the weekend.
Does it help when criminals are stupid?
A little bit.
Just confirm.
Does Stan, is animal control misused under your vehicle? No.
What?
Is animal control misused under your vehicle?
No, not on this report, it's not.
Would you like a copy of the paper?
I would, I would.
If you want to ride along with her, you can. She'll ride. No, I mean, that was never asked, if you want me to, I'll put it on.
I would like to.
Okay. It will be on there, so. Any other questions, Tom?
Appreciate it, Jim.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
All right. Here's the city administrators' biweekly report, please.
All right, you have your financials for the month of June. Couple of things in here. I meant to print out the email. And this is not on the financial statement, but I wanted to say this. We rolled water rates in May with the assumption that consumption was wanting to go up. Consumption has actually gone down.
That's correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Not because of me, I'm watering.
Here's a, this is from Randy. In two thousand sixteen, we used eight point six million gallons of water from June, excuse me, July one to July fifteen. Rainfall for the same timeframe was zero. In two thousand seventeen, we used six point eight million gallons from July one to July fifteen. Rainfall for that timeframe was two point oh three. So. The rain is almost unusual thing where it actually hurts us now in terms of ourselves.
It never rains in July. But it did.
Yeah, but it did. And so that's to say that our water sales are down about fifty thousand from last year. So, that is a concern, but we're still monitoring this. I think if we, like you said, it never rains in July, so we're gonna see what this looks like riding this out for the rest of the month.
From a percentage scale point, it looks like we're still within range of the budget.
Yes, we are.
On the non-operating water expenditures?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Do we still owe that hundred thousand dollar loan payment that's in the budget?
That is, that was budgeted and never we closed. Let's see. Okay, you're looking at, uh, let's see.
Fifty-eight thirty loan payments?
Fifty-eight thirty loan payments, yes, a hundred grand. That is, if we ever close the loan, if we ever came to a conclusion on something, I put that in there as a number until we actually know what the actual numbers are gonna be. So, no, that's not actually debt that we owe yet.
Okay, and then on the bond payments, the budget, four thirty-five?
Uh, yes, meters. That was the, that was the difference.
So is there? Okay.
Four thirty-five was what the water treatment plant was when we did meters. It did not get into last year's budget and.
And that's not covered by your answer or anything else?
No. We actually made our first bond payment in June? June first. So, if you take that bond payment plus the fifty thousand, that's where you're gonna see your differential of water.
It is pleasing to see that your thirty-four hundred dollars over budget on sidewalk improvement.
Those trees. Business owner Hutchins requested that the city maintain the trees because apparently there's too many leaves or whatever getting into the gutters that we didn't want in the first place that the business owner wanted. And we cut the trees. We had, uh, look for some of the.
Do you write?
Yeah, I do. But yes, your point's taken.
So, since I bought Stan hamburger, I have a right to ask this. Seventy thousand dollars. Am I reading that wrong? Where, you're the data actual on the salary?
Oh, okay. I know where you're going with that one. We paid McNulty. If you notice. Police Department, he's looking on page two, if you look at salaries for chief, seventy thousand, three ninety-two.
Yes.
We paid McNulty X. But if you go down and look at sergeant's pay of forty-one six, you'll notice we only paid five thousand.
Okay.
So, once we stopped paying Stan out of fifty twenty-four, we started paying him at fifty twenty.
So he was in a city administrator training school.
The only, the only budget issue would have us in the water and still, because the general airport municipal are good. It's just the water budget right now.
Yes.
And it's all related to the, to the bottom meter.
Yes.
So.
But the bottom line is.
For, for the month.
For a while.
We'll be out of it.
I always look at the bottom.
We will be out, I'm gonna be there this time. It's two hundred in the hole, you take sixty-five or whatever it was, sixty thousand for the meter payment and the fifty thousand of the lost revenue, there's about a hundred grand right there. We made a five hundred thousand dollar bond payment in June, which impacts the budget.
Well, that's fine, it's a little bit forward.
Yes.
So that's why the percentage is gonna mark out.
Yes, 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 yes. I'm not, I'm not jumping off the cliff. But clearly, I'm taking the credit cards away from people instead of, you know. We need to play some catch up. I hate using this phrase, especially with business owners who have a cash flow problem. I think people start turning on their taps.
Hey, I'm doing it my part.
Me too. But, uh, I, I'm not overly worried.
It doesn't look bad, it's just.
Yeah, it just.
It's a timing issue for this one.
Exactly. They set the bond payments in June thinking that's when you get your revenues. Realistically, if I could move that to September, it would be better because that's when I get my revenues. At the end of the summer, not at the beginning of summer. And these bonds are paid for with our revenues, so. Does that make sense, Bob?
Yep.
All right, so there's your financial statement. You also have in front of you a budget calendar. Beginning Wednesday through the thirty-first, I'm gonna have budget meetings with department heads. I'm meeting with Stan at eight o'clock Monday morning to go over a police and HCO, for example. I will tell you that, I've told most of the staff this. There will be limited pay raises this year. I don't think we're gonna see necessarily a group of quote-unquote merit raises. Not that they don't deserve it, but our health insurance costs have gone up thirty-four percent. Technically, our health insurance costs went up twenty-five percent. But to quote Clint Eastwood, for a few dollars more, we can get a far superior policy. The current policy that we have, our employees do not use plan and sample. It's a, the deductible's very high and they simply are not using it. If we pay a few dollars more, we'll have a policy that they'll enjoy. But if you look at our claims, that is not reflective of our employees. We've had a couple of incidents where they have driven up those claimants numbers. Uh, so we'll go through budget meetings last part of July, August the first, I have to have a file proposal, proposed budget with Bonita, I intend to have that done. August sixteenth, I'm gonna deliver an ad to the Runners County Register. August twenty-fourth, our budget and tax rate ads will run in the register. September fifth, we will have a public hearing on the budget and tax rate. September the twelfth, we will have a public hearing on the budget and tax rate. And on September the eighteenth, we will adopt the budget and the tax rate. When you see the ad that goes in the paper. The ad that will run on August the twenty-fourth. This is something I have done in the past and unless y'all instruct me otherwise, I'll continue to do that. You will see the proposed tax rate up to eight percent. And here's one, not that we're necessarily going to adopt a tax rate up to eight percent. But we can always come off of that. If I say it's through two percent, we can't go above two. If I say it's three, we can't go above three. That is not necessarily the rate we're going to adopt, but I want to give y'all as much flexibility as possible when it comes to setting the tax rate. Is that clear to you? Okay. Anyone have any objections to, to doing that? Now, I want to be clear to everybody watching on YouTube tomorrow. Right now, I have no idea if the intent's to go up eight percent, I don't think this council has a bunch of an appetite to do that. But we don't know what the appetite is.
You mean Facebook or YouTube?
YouTube. You're on YouTube, huh?
Yep.
People complimented you on your tie.
Like you go to try.
I did for about fifteen years. I don't play tennis, that's why I don't wear ties.
A gentleman on school.
Yes, exactly. As Amanda had mentioned, you'll see benches and trash can receptacles that we have ordered, I'm sure you have those pictures in there. I think they look great. We'll go pick those up in Laredo here in a couple of weeks. The chamber paid half, the city paid half. These will go along Hutchins and Eighth Street, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Will these benches be bolted down?
Yes, yes, yes.
And so will the trash receptacles?
Let's see, we got that. Liquor election update, as you know, there's a liquor election out there. We, they have until the twenty-first to get a signature, is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, we need to adopt, well, we need to, we're gonna put your, I will, no, we don't, I. We will have to basically rubber stamp the signatures and certify that the signatures were done before it goes to commissioners' court over the elections.
Did you put that in the minute, squeeze the donut?
Would you like chocolate or blade?
Chocolate.
What do you mean, lawyer?
We can't pay. We struck a deal.
Yes, we did. So, that will, they got to the twenty-first, we'll adopt that on the seventh and then it goes to commissioners' court. What's the menu and signatures issue?
Is it two hundred and five?
It's two nineteen.
Two nineteen, two oh five?
Two hundred and five.
Oh wait, a city issue goes to commissioners' court?
Yes. Yes, we, we basically, the council rubber stamped that Bonita has certified the signatures, is this correct?
Correct.
And then it goes to commissioners' court with them to basically.
Why does the city issue go to county?
It's something that changed probably like six or seven years ago. It used to go directly back to the county, but it's a regulation that changed quite a few years ago. It has to be rubber stamped by the city before it goes back to the county.
No, I just wanna.
Once it's county at all?
Yeah, once it's county, it's the same.
We're not talking about certain alcohol.
It goes back to the clerk's office and the tax office number when they verify voter registration numbers.
There you go.
It's about registration, every signature has to be by the person that got registered. Can the, can the county reject? The, in other words, they just rubber stamp the signatures, they don't, they don't give an up or down.
They are not proofing. It is not up to state for disapproval.
They have to verify each, each one. And it has to be that, that amount or more and they have to be registered.
I actually live in this city, Wes.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Who's that?
That was a problem last time.
Yes.
Mama was signing for four or five kids and it's the same signature.
Yes. We have a situation at the airport that I wanted y'all to know about. We had a tenant who was a city employee who's no longer a tenant there. We discovered some things that made me uncomfortable about the, some of the activities going on out there. It was nothing illegal. But it was concerning that it was city property. Those concerns were confirmed once we got into the house. I had pictures of what it looks like, but I don't have anything to picture to adjust us. That house is in tremendous disrepair and we are in the process of making those repairs. We had loose electrical wires in our ceilings. We had found out today there was a bunch of cockroaches in the oven. Just another of the things that were concerning to me. My intent, and we're talking about the house up there. We used to have an airport manager. My intent is to, uh, I have a, an employee who works in the street department that's approached me about renting that house out. I would like to rent the house out, um, with a lease and a contract. The rent payments, uh, would go towards funding an automated gas pump out there. About 15 to 20,000 for one, and so, uh, three years, four years worth of rent will pay for that. Other responsibilities would be maintaining the grounds at the house and the surrounding area. And that the house would be in good repair. I also notified the, the potential employee that, uh, if we get out there and the house is ever looking like this, not only will you be kicked out, you're gonna be fired. And so, we're gonna put some teeth behind this. We definitely need somebody at the airport, um, and we definitely need somebody in the house. If nobody rents a house out, it's gonna just fall down the corner of disrepair. The, the relationship right now has been that you lived out there rent free, provided that you did maintenance, uh, and mowed, any sort of lights and those issues, you, you took care of those. Those things were not happening. After the two warnings, uh, I basically evicted one of our employees. And so, uh, and then we had a very, uh, serious and stern conversation Friday about this future employment. It was appalling what I saw, and every day, uh, is another issue that we, that we're dealing with. So, I wanted y'all to be aware of that. Any objections to me drawing out the lease and, and getting an employee and, and paying a reasonable amount of rent, so on, okay?
I'm there if she was associated with having employees do work that's not paid. They all live in the same world we are, 'cause it's a business, if we do that, we're in trouble.
As a condition of your housing, like you're gonna get rent at a reduced rate in exchange for labor, is that?
Cause that can be in the lease.
Well, I'm just, employment law is something totally different, and I just don't know if cities are subject to that. I just think it's something we might, we might have to check the box off on, because, I mean, if you show up from here, you don't walk out there unless you're clocked in.
When I talk about work, we're talking about, if you have a rental property, you even have to maintain the yard in front of it.
Well, if you're changing the lights out and.
No, no.
We're talking about that.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about, not, you don't go change the lights out, there's a light out on the runway, you call us Carl.
Okay.
Carl, no, no, we're not talking about you physically.
Okay, okay, that, that's what I was concerned about, is if they're out there taking care of grounds.
No.
Mowing around the.
No.
You know, all, all that stuff.
No.
Mowing, weed eating, spraying, uh, electrical, they're supposed to report.
Yeah.
Mowing, weed eating, spraying, the whole airport?
No, just.
There's just a yard.
Just that yard area.
Okay.
Everything else is being done by the street department, the janitorial staff.
Yeah, okay.
Everything else is being done by those guys.
Okay, then we're fine. And I was just concerned about, I mean, if, if, if it can be perceived that he's on the clock.
What we were running into was there were no lights on the runway. And I had pilots and people call me all the time, say, this light's out, this light's out. And of course, that's a hazard for anybody. We had a number of pilot, we had a number of pilots, um, knew the employee was there, and he refused to come out and pump gas. Uh, which is part of the airport manager responsibility, that's what we take care of it and do automated. But one of the remedies we tried to do is generate rent from this house and pay for that. I think we got a hidden gem out in the airport, um, when we can sort of get our minds off of, off of water, if we ever get that issue resolved, uh, that's the next hurdle that we can really develop. It'll be expensive, but I think, I think the juice is worth the squeeze. TML convention registration, uh, tomorrow is the opening day, which means if you wanna stay in a host hotel, I need to be on the internet at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. If not, we're gonna be humping it a couple of blocks. What I'm going to do is I'm going to register every single one of you. If you decide not to go, let me know, we can get an employee to go understand, it's not a problem. Does anybody right now definitely know they will not be there?
When is it?
October 5th, is that first week in October?
It's October the 3rd through the 5th, that's in Houston.
So, I'm gonna register everybody, if you decide you don't wanna go, let me know, those never been used. Will you put that in there? Last thing, street paving update, uh, we've done 11th Street, I don't know if you've had a chance to drive down it yet, um, but I think you guys did a really good job, Scotty is very pleased with it. Uh, there's two colors of rock on there, um, the way it works is we call in a transport truck, about 7,000 bucks, and the truck got two, one and a half coats of where our black rock is. We still have a little bit left, um, on the, I guess, the west side of, of 11th Street. We're going to do the park road, um, from, um, you know, Peggy Five Ash's house is, down the hill to the concrete, um, drainage. And then that road that goes behind Peggy's house and Hoffman and mine, we're going to rock that. As soon as we're done with that, we're going to zip, we're follow this, and we're gonna come all the way down the hill, we're gonna take out the speed bump, we're gonna go down by the dam, and then come back around there where that middle road is. We will zip that up, which means we're gonna shoe up all the asphalt, we're gonna put some base down, we're gonna let people drive on it for about a week, and then we're gonna shoot it with rock. In the process, we're also going to move the sewer line from where it's currently located at now, which is, there's a dump station for RVs, we're gonna move it back closer to the river and, uh, and, and put it out there. Right now, where it is, it's an absolute hazard, 'cause if you're in a fifth wheel, you're not going to, you're coming on a block, you're cutting down. So, we're going to, to move that out, take care of that. We will put speed bumps back in, um, I'm tempted to get a, to get a backhoe and put a speed bump in on 11th Street. When I was just sitting there today, uh, I noticed that we had a number of vehicles, um, taking advantage of the new street.
They tested it.
And so, that's where we are with that, and then we started looking on a number of other projects, uh, to do some street pay. Any concerns on, on the schedule or that? Atlas is doing Strong Avenue, they're over there, uh, behind Ballenger Bank, um, at some point, they're gonna start on Strong, uh, over by Tolliver's, and then work their way back to the courthouse, or go to the courthouse and work their way back. I think that's taking a longer time than they anticipated, uh, they were supposed to be done with that in a couple of days, it's been a couple of weeks. So, uh, they're gonna dictate quite a bit on where we pay. That is my report for today.
Alright, here request the future agenda items from city councils, if you guys need to get on the agenda, please. Founder of city council, Schmene Executive Sessions, authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney, removed from the table, entered via contract, filed for, Robert's collection service.